Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Jackson Public Schools System Meeting is now called to order. We have a quorum, we have six, two, three, four, five, six persons present and one person. Is that right? Okay. Uh, one person on the phone, Dr. Harrison will be on the, uh, phone, uh, tonight. One on the line, uh, that's right. The president is traveling on fam- family business tonight. We've all had an opportunity to see the agenda for tonight. Do we have a motion? Some moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
There are no nays, there being none. The motion is approved. We have all had an opportunity to review the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the September 20th Regular Board Meeting Mi- Mi- Minutes? And the September 26th Special Board Meeting? Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 No nays, there being none. The motion is approved. Now, we are down to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Vice President Hilliard. Good evening, board members, to our JPS administrators and staff and scholars and parents and community partners. Thank you all for being with us here this evening or listening to us. Uh, we'll begin as we typically do with, um, the, uh, highlights reel from our instructional
Jackson Public Schools' commitment to excellence in education pays off in a big way. The results of the 2021-22 Mississippi Academic Assessment Tests show that student performance in English, Math, Science, and U.S. History in grades three through eight and in high schools improved, advancing the Jackson Public School District as a whole by a letter grade from a D to a C-rated school district.
We achieved this performance level by strategically focusing our work, by mobilizing our talented educators to support scholars in and out of the classrooms, and by holding ourselves accountable for delivering with excellence.
And special recognition goes to Lester Elementary, McWillie Elementary, and Wells APAC Elementary, which ranked in the top 20 in the state, and Obama Elementary School, ranked as the state's top elementary school. Plus, two outstanding leaders in Jackson Public Schools' education are honored for their remarkable service. Dr. Sarah Pearson-Harper, Principal at McWillie Elementary, which ranks 13th among the state's top elementary schools, and Principal John Johnson of Obama Elementary School, coming in as the state's number-one elementary school. These two leaders will serve in the Mississippi Principal Advisory Council, where they can share their success stories and help other administrators. And congratulations to Blackburn Middle School. Scholars and teachers accepted a two-week plastic bottle recycle challenge from the Juanita Sims Doughty Foundation.
This is a community service piece, um, and that's something that our students need in order to be competitive globally.
During this time, three students and one teacher received special recognition and monetary prizes for their hard work. Blackburn collected 25,608 plastic water bottles, setting an example on one way to protect the environment and to keep the city of Jackson beautiful. For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website at www.jackson.k12.ms.us. Follow us on Facebook at Jackson Public Schools, on Twitter at JPS District, Comcast Channels 18 and 19, and YouTube at www.youtube.com/JPSITV.
As always, we want to thank our instructional television team for keeping us updated with happenings around JPS, um, the school district. Board members, we continue, uh, to celebrate our district's improvement to a C-rating based on the state's A-through-F accountability system. Um, want to reiterate a few of the highlights related to our improved performance. Uh, one, we've achieved the highest graduation rate that we've seen in recent history, nearly 85 percent, and we're really proud of that and excited to continue to, to build on, on that success with our graduation rate. Uh, we've raised our performance in English Language Arts and in Mathematics back to pre-pandemic levels, effectively regaining the ground that we had lost and, you know, there's been lots of conversation around, uh, lost opportunities for learning and lost ground, um, and gaps and all of that sort of thing. So, we're really excited that we're, um, closing that gap and, and using this as a, um, and use this past year as a, a real launching point and, um, and a, a time for accelerated growth, which is also super important. We've also achieved just some of the highest growth that we've ever seen on the state test, and, um, we'll talk a bit more later as we present some of the data from the state, um, uh, test from the spring, um, but we are really excited about the amount of growth that we've seen, and we know that this is again a launching, uh, pad and an opportunity for us to continue to deliver on excellence for our scholars. Also, just to, to note, all of our JPS high schools improved at least one letter grade and several schools increased two or more letter grades, and so, we're excited about that, and you'll hear a little bit more about some of that improvement by school. Four of our JPS elementary schools ranked in the top 20, and, uh, as you've already heard, Obama Elementary School ranked number one, Lester Elementary School ranked number five, McWillie Elementary ranked number 13, and Wells APAC Elementary ranked number 16. Um, we're super excited about our improvements as a district, and I'll ask Dr. Cormac, our deputy superintendent, to join us now to further highlight some of the achievements made by individual schools, and he'll share a little more on that.
Good evening, uh, to Mrs. Hilliard, uh, Dr. Green, members of the board, and our JPS community. We are super excited to celebrate the accomplishment of our schools that are growing and progressing, uh, toward our vision of excellence for all. Um, Mr. Johnson is prepared to share, uh, some slides, and what I would like to do is, as you can see, we have a, a pretty full house this evening. We'd like to acknowledge many of our principal leaders who are here with us this evening, and as their school names are called, we ask that they stand and that we give each list a huge round of applause for the tremendous leadership that they have demonstrated, um, through this last academic year and every year. Um, our A-rated schools are first. Uh, we have Barack Obama IB Elementary School, Casey Elementary School, John Hopkins Elementary, Key Elementary, Lester Elementary, McWillie Elementary, Wells APAC Elementary, Bailey APAC Middle School, and Northwest Middle School. Let's give a big round of applause. Tremendous, tremendous work, and, and many of these schools, uh, have their assistant principals also represented, so we're excited that you brought the team to celebrate this because it is truly a team effort. Next, we'll acknowledge our B-rated schools. We start with Dawson Elementary, Galloway Elementary, Lake Elementary, Pecan Park Elementary School, Shirley Elementary, Span Elementary, Timberline Elementary, People's Middle School, and Callaway High School. Give them a big round of applause. Each of those instances, we have schools that have made multiple jumps, and we'll acknowledge that in just a bit. Our C-rated schools, Baker Elementary, Clausell Elementary, Isabel Elementary, Johnson Elementary School, McLeod Elementary, North Jackson Elementary, Smith Elementary, Walton Elementary, Wilkins Elementary, Forest Hill High School, Jim Hill High School, Murrah High School. Big round of applause. Up next, we'd like to acknowledge some movers. These are the schools that we're calling our Pot of Gold Schools. They both achieved an A and maintained an A through the pandemic. They are Barack Obama Elementary School, Casey Elementary School, Key Elementary School, Lester Elementary School, Wells APAC Elementary School, Bailey APAC Middle School, and Northwest IB Middle School. They found the secret sauce. We next acknowledge a list of schools that have climbed the ladder, meaning that they increased their accountability points by 10 or more, uh, but maintained a current level. This is really important to acknowledge those schools that have sticked and stayed with a, uh, some set of strategies, but also grown within that level, and so, we want to acknowledge growth at all levels. They are North Jackson Elementary School, Span Elementary School, Clausell Elementary School, Raines Elementary School, Lake Elementary School, Shirley Elementary School, Brinkley Middle School, and Cardozo Middle School. Big round of applause. And then, we, uh, have a category called our Mountain Move for Schools. These are schools that move one or more accountability levels, and we're very, very proud of this. Many schools with, uh, two or more, uh, jumps, and so, we're quite excited about what that means for scholar achievement and performance. Boyd Elementary School. Galloway Elementary School. Isabel Elementary School. McWillie Elementary School. You see, they got a lot of pride for their college. Absolutely. Oak Forest Elementary School. Smith Elementary School. Walton Elementary School. Green Elementary School. John Hopkins Elementary School. Johnson Elementary School. Timberline Elementary School. Wilkins Elementary School. People's Middle School. Whitten Middle School. Callaway High School. Forest Hill High School. Jim Hill High School. Lanier High School. Murrah High School. Provine High School. You heard a lot of high schools in there.
Amen.
Yeah. All seven represented in our mountain climb, so we're real excited about that.
Amazing.
And acknowledging our best in the state. These are top 10 schools recognized by achievement, by performance, and so, you can see, uh, where we rank, uh, within the state, uh, in addition to, in these particular areas. Barack Obama Elementary School, first in state and recognized, uh, first in state for third-grade ELA and fourth-grade ELA, fourth in state for fifth-grade ELA, third in state for fourth-grade math, and second in state for fifth-grade math. Let's give them. Lester, while being recognized as the fifth overall elementary school, was also 10th in state for third-grade ELA. A big hand there. Wells APAC, 16th in state overall and fourth in state for fourth-grade ELA and eighth in state for fifth-grade ELA. And then Northwest IB Middle School, first in state, uh, in seventh-grade ELA, fourth in state for seventh-grade math. Big hand there. And Bailey APAC Middle School, third in state in seventh-grade ELA and first in state in eighth-grade ELA. Big round of applause. And as we have acknowledged, uh, we're very excited to, uh, have a top-ranked elementary school in the state, Barack Obama Magnet. Eight, uh, is our, uh, number-one school, elementary school overall, uh, with an A rating. Let's get to it. As a small, uh, point of personal privilege, I want to acknowledge, um, in addition to the great leadership and teachers that we have in each of the schools, they are supported and captained by our dynamic team of assistant superintendents. And so, I would like to acknowledge each representing Elementary Division One, captained by none other than Dr. Kathleen Grexby. Division Two is captained by the fearless Mrs. Deion Woody. Representing our middle school division, the dynamic Dr. Marvin Greer. And leading our high school school district, uh, we have the none other than Mrs. Lakeisha Marshall-Tompson.
You know that's how they act.
We appreciate that it takes, uh, a dynamic team, and so, to, uh, each of our assistant superintendents who work so hard to be in schools and to provide the leadership, um, you all are a great team, and we want to carry Dr. Green's vision forward, so we're shooting after that V. Principals, do we have your support in getting us there?
Oh, yeah.
We were going to get there. Thank you all for this opportunity to acknowledge our dynamic leaders.
I want to, I want to thank you again, Dr. Cormac, just for your leadership and your continued support of the work that it takes to, uh, steward this district and, and align all of our practices and our efforts. Board members, this is, I've said it before and I'll, I'll keep saying it, this is a, a really important milestone for us. You know, whether folks want to acknowledge it or not, with this improved rating, uh, JPS is no longer considered a performing district. And, um, as I stated before, and we'll hear more about the, uh, analysis of our, our state test scores and, and, um, performance this past year, we, we know, we're very clear that we've got, still got a lot of work to do. We, we know this, and, and I know that these leaders, all of these leaders in this room and others who couldn't be with us this evening, they get it. Um, they've been working really hard, they're committed to making change happen, not years from now, but right now. Um, they understand the urgency, they understand the, the challenges of leading, like, change and transformation, and, and they're making it. They're proving what some probably believe is impossible. They're proving that it's possible, and so, I have so much appreciation for all of these amazing educators, these amazing leader, leaders here, and all of the educators throughout our district, all the families that have helped us to get to where we are and those who will help us to continue on in understanding that, um, it's our time, it's on our watch, and we don't have a choice. Um, so, it's really, really lots of, uh, love for this team and for what we've accomplished and what we're yet to accomplish. So, we know that we've still got lots of work to do, and, um, we know that it's our time to make it happen. So, Mrs. Blackshear will come later and, um, help us to explore some of that data and, um, spark more discussion on some of the opportunities that we have for continued growth. And now, moving forward, um, board members, every year in October, every year, every year in October, Jackson Public Schools proudly participates in the National Principals' Month to celebrate and advocate for our building-level administrators, whose leadership is essential for achieving individual scholar success, um, which leads to overall school-community well-being. And as you can see by the improved performance at the vast majority of our schools, JPS principals continue to raise academic standards and to create the necessary culture for our schools to succeed. And through collaboration with their school-community stakeholders, our principals are delivering on the JPS vision to prepare scholars to achieve globally, to contribute locally, and to be fulfilled individually. Please join us as we honor them for their vision, for their leadership, and for their dedication to providing transformative learning experiences for all JPS scholars. Principals, administrators, we can't say enough, we can't say thank you enough, and so, um, we hope that we will show it, show our love and appreciation for you. And now, board members, I'm pleased to revive our tradition of recognizing one of our amazing scholars for exhibiting our core values. This scholar recently received the Caught Being Good Award for his efforts to ensure that the school campus was clean during their achievement activity. At this time, I invite our People's Middle School Principal, Dr. Spurgeon Banyard, um, to the podium, who will, uh, join us to, to tell us a bit more about this amazing People's Middle School scholar.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Good evening, board members, uh, parents and guests. Uh, this student exemplifies everything about People's Middle School. Anybody that know me know that I'm OCD. I believe in everything being structured, organized, and clean, and, uh, this young man, he sees me picking up, uh, paper and trash off the campus, throughout the building when students, uh, drop things down, and he just picked it up, uh, behind me. So, uh, I think we was at, uh, Forest Hill, uh, a principal meeting last week, and my teachers realized and recognized this young man as well, and so, pretty much, they, uh, took pictures of him doing that, and that's why we, uh, got him for Caught Being Good. But I also want to say about this young man that on the, uh, MAP assessment for ELA, he grew from a 1A to a 3A, and on the MAP assessment, he grew from a 2A to a 4A. Not only, he, he shy, y'all, so don't, you know, just look over there, he's a shy young man, but, uh, but not, he comes from a good father. Would you come up as well, dad? Uh, his dad, uh, Jimmy Emerson and everything, so we just want to recognize him and honor
Oh, it's so nice to be recognizing and sharing some space with our, our young people, especially those who have a heart to serve their communities and, um, for their own personal growth, and so, again, let's, let's give this young man another round of applause. And with that, Vice President Hilliard, that concludes my remarks. I turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you so very much, Dr. Green, for presenting such an exciting report. Uh, I, I think this is something that we all have waited for since we joined the board. We have all been waiting to hear that term, that, you know, we are not about to get on that state, stay to remain on that state bad list, uh, and we appreciate so very, very much all of the hard work that, uh, each person, each of you has put into this, you know, which is, it's so exciting to hear this, you know, uh, and now, I don't have to keep asking that question that I like to ask all the time about our being there and on the bottom, and, well, it's just so exciting. I am just overcome with joy. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm a graduate of, uh, Jim Hill High School, Jackson Public Schools, so, you know, I just, oh. I just, do what? Comments? I just want to say, I am just up here full, just completely full, just as a parent of Jackson Public Schools, and six of my babies graduating and fighting through the madness that our children were not. They are, always have been, and I saw it from the beginning, and I just thank God that now the world can get to see it and celebrate with us and celebrate our babies with us, and they can see it for themselves. They will feel it for themselves. We're not on the bottom. Is, I guess the song is to say, I started on the bottom, now we're here. We are here, and we going up, 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 and I'm so excited to be on this team. I feel like I'm at a football game tonight. I'm like, yes! So, thank you all for all that you all do. Well, we are all so excited that we're messing around here, church up in here. Just so very excited about the accomplishments, and we know, and that it could not have been done without the hard work, the dedication of each one of you, and so, we, we thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any other comments? Okay, thanks again. Yes, oh, okay. All right, Gee. Thank you. Okay, uh, do we have any participants for public comments?
Board members, we have one person who signed up to address you, um, McKinney Rainey.
Okay, we have, uh, one person?
Yes.
Okay. Community members who would like to make public comments should email their requests to roswilliams@jackson.k12.ms.us no later than 4:00 PM the day of the meeting, or appear in person in the boardroom no later than 5:15 PM the day of the meeting. Attorney Dorian?
Okay. McKinney Rainey would like to address you regarding LGBTQ. McKinney Rainey? Or I also have Guy or Rob Hill? Guy or Rob Hill?
Okay. Well, I guess the persons that were planning to speak are overcome with joy. Yes. Okay. Next, we have infom- information-only items. Sandra Robinson, Executive Director of Facilities and Operations.
In tonight's presentation, we will provide construction updates, the bond financial report, and the timeline for completion. Ms. Franklin will start us off with the construction updates for Dawson, North Jackson, Sykes, and Walton.
As you can see from our short list, we're winding down on our bond projects. Tonight, we'll be looking at some of our elementary schools where we're closing out restrooms. At Dawson Elementary, this is a boys' and girls' restrooms that have been completed. They've received all new updated plumbing inside the chase walls, new ceramic wall tile and floor tile, updated LED lighting, all new plumbing fixtures, new solid plastic partitions, all new mirrors and accessories. The only two things that we're still waiting on in this set of restrooms are our new windows to come in and the new doors to be installed, the exterior doors. At North Jackson Elementary School, we finished a second and third set of student restrooms. They've received all new updated plumbing, new wall tile and floor tile, all new plumbing fixtures, accessories, updated LED lighting, and solid plastic partitions. At Sykes Elementary School, we were able to replace all of the millwork in the kindergarten classrooms. The photo on the left, we see the condition of the previous millwork. In the right, we see the updated cabinets with solid surface countertops and stainless sink. At Walton Elementary, this is our third set of student restrooms. All of the plumbing inside the chase walls is complete at this stage. The epoxy floors are complete also. Contractors have installed the plumbing, ceramic wall tile, and they're working on finishing out the paint and installing the partitions. Next, Ms. Robinson will give us an update on our financials.
As Ms. Franklin shared, the list of projects is a little short this week, but because we are wrapping these projects up and finally bringing the bond to close, as of September 29th, we've expended 80% of the bond funds. That's up from 76.4 from the September 6th bond update that we provided. The next three slides provide a school-by-school breakdown of the financials, given the budget, the amount expended, the amount encumbered, and the budget balance. We do want to pay attention to the third page of this. If you look at the row that shows the baseball/softball complex, we have transferred the funds to encumber almost $5 million. That includes the construction fees as well as the AECs. And we will, we look to encumber those funds for the project this week, and the notice to proceed will be issued on Thursday at the pre-construction meeting for the baseball/softball complex. So we're excited to get that project kicked off. This slide gives a completion for the bond for the major projects that are remaining. As far as still performing arts, we have an expected completion date of October 14th, that same date for John Hopkins exterior renovations. Walton restroom has a completion, projected completion date of October 31st. Forest Hill JRTC renovations, November 1st. ProVion Academy Space upgrades, November 30th. Hughes Field improvements, December 26th. And the baseball/softball complex, we're projected to complete that by April 2023. So we're excited to get these projects under completion. The timeline for completion for some bond ESR projects, at the last board meeting, we did define that there are few projects that we're going to blend together the bond and ESR funds. Two of those projects are McLeod Renovations and Wells APAC. We will begin to advertise those projects. We have a projected start date of January 2023 for McLeod and February 2023 for Wells APAC, with both of those projected completion to be August 2023. For Newell Field, we, on the agenda tonight, we're rejecting all bids for Newell Field, but we will be presenting at the November 1st board meeting an update on how we're going to rebid the project and get it done in phases. We will also present at the next board meeting our plan for using bond and ESR funds for Bailey APAC. So we're excited to be able to use ESR funds, like we said, in order to complete those bond projects that didn't have enough money in the bond to get those completed. That concludes our presentation. Any questions?
Board members, are there questions, comments?
How are we feeling about our overall schedule and move towards completion as we're coming nearer to the end of this bond?
We're feeling good. We know there were major delays. We're still denoting what those delays were. We're working with the bond attorneys to make sure that we're still okay financially as far as the timeframe for expanding everything, but we are also working with Mr. Burke and also Ms. Purnell to make sure that we're on target to complete these projects by, and we do project for baseball/softball, April 2023, and then we'll be making some more updates to you for Newell Field next month.
Great. I'll add to that, you know, obviously, we, the plan was to have had all of these At the same time, our, bless you, at the same time, our needs and the context in which we're working have greatly shifted over the course of the bond program. And so, while projects were scoped in a particular way four, five, whatever it was, five years ago, four years ago, five years ago, you know, we find ourselves in a very different market. The costs of these materials and equipment and labor, all of this, has shifted upward just drastically, and so it's caused us to rethink our plans. At the same time, blessing and curse, the ESR dollars are available to help to augment some of what the funding that we have in the bond, and so we'll share some more of those plans, you know, in short order. So while, you know, we certainly would like to have completed projects sooner, you know, we, like others, have just had to bear with and deal with and manage through a lot of the challenges in the construction field and market that have impacted our plans. So at the end of the day, we'll have some, some pretty remarkable improvements in several, several, several buildings and facilities to use for our scholars.
It's exciting to see, and just kudos to the whole team and all the hard work that's been done to get us here. When we were out there pitching this to the voters to get them to approve it, so many doubted, and that was the naysayers. They said, you know, and they kept pointing to previous bonds and things like this. It is so important, and as Dr. Seaback has reminded us, it won't be that long before we need to go back to them.
To do another.
And show that we were good stewards of this money and that we need their support in the future.
Yeah, and to that, it'll be, it'll be pretty compelling for us to name the projects that either were never scoped out in the original bond program or where we've been able to expand on and do more. I know there are some schools that have gotten more in the way of renovations or options because we were able to do that and because we did have some or benefited from some bond revenues. Not to mention the, again, the ESR funds that we've been able to mobilize and leverage as well. So we'll be able to brag on some additional projects that were never originally scoped. Thank you, ladies, as always. Appreciate you.
Are there other, any other questions, comments, before we release them? You all have done a great job. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay? Okay, next, on the information items only, we have a review of rental agreement between Jackson Public Schools and the Mississippi Department of Agriculture and Commerce, 2023 high school graduation exercises, and I believe that's... Lakeisha.
Thank you. Great evening, Dr. Green, Vice President Hilliard, board members. The administration is requesting approval of the agreement between Jackson Public Schools and the Mississippi Department of Agriculture and Commerce for the 2023 high school commencement ceremonies on Tuesday, May 30th, and Wednesday, May 31st, 2023. The Mississippi Coliseum is the most appropriate local facility because it provides adequate parking, seating, and traffic access to ensure a smooth and enjoyable experience for our students, staff, and families, and we've held our commencement exercises at the Coliseum for 24 years.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Are there questions, comments? Thank, did you have a question?
I am. It feels like we're getting the stunt early this year.
We are.
Early bird.
That's right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Marshall. Next on the agenda, school year 2022 MAAP data update, and Ms. LaShears.
In anticipation of 100% graduation.
That's exactly right. At least 90.
Did I pronounce your name incorrectly?
It's Latoya. Oh, Black Shear, it doesn't matter. I tell people, black crayon, sheer seals, it's okay.
Thank you.
Not a problem. Good evening, Vice President, Ms., Dr. Hilliard, board members, JPS family and friends. Tonight, I am honored to share with you our Spring 2022 accountability data. So before I begin doing so, I want to remind everyone of our vision, mission, and our core values, and that's what you see here projected. At Jackson Public School, we prepare scholars to achieve globally, to contribute locally, and be fulfilled individually. At Jackson Public School, we develop scholars through world-class learning experience to obtain an exceptional knowledge base, critical and relevant skill set, and the necessary disposition for great success. Now, I've highlighted the critical and relevant skill set because we believe in the office of data and accountability. It is one of our roles is to assist your assistant superintendents in developing our leaders and our teachers in the area of data. Also, lastly, our core values throughout this presentation, you will see a focus on equity, excellent growth mindset, and relevance. So the purpose of this presentation is to provide you with a high-level overview of our Spring 2022 MAP data, discuss where we are in terms of proficiency, and we're going to outline a few steps, and discuss where we are in terms, and outline a few next steps in order for us to become a B-rated school district next year. So just to remind everyone, this slide represents the components or the indicators of the accountability model for one-point schools and districts with an EL indicator. We are awarded a point for all, for any scholar that scores a proficient and advanced and for proficiency with ELA, math, and science. We're also awarded points for growth, growing our students from one year to a next. Graduation rate is included in that model, acceleration for performance and participation, AP courses, dual credit, all of that, as well as our ACT is in the model. Those students that are meeting benchmark readiness, we are awarded a point, and of course, progress to proficiency for our EL. So just for a minute, allow me to take you down memory lane. I won't be here very long. Just won't, not long. So for three years, as you can see, 2016 to 17, we were an F-rated district with our lowest total points in 2017, looming a state takeover, and then in 2019, ratings were frozen for 2020 and 2021 due to the pandemic. So we maintained that D-rating in 2021. But now, in the tunes of the famous group, The McFatten and The Whitehead, y'all know that song? Ain't no stopping us now, we're on the move. So we're right at a 569 with a letter grade of a C. So how did we yield the 569? This slide here represents the components for English. You have proficiency, growth for all. I included the year of 2018. However, I just will kind of discuss 2019 to 2022 because 2019 was the last official time we received ratings, okay? Now, you'll see that we increased our proficiency by a tenth for ELA. We reached our all-time high in growth for all students and growth for low 25 as well. And you'll also note that we outpaced the state in our growth low 25. For mathematics, again, we have acknowledged that our growth for opportunity is mathematics because we decreased by a little over 2%. Again, we reached an all-time high in our growth for all students and our growth low 25, again, outpacing the state at 73.4% for our growth low 25. Now, we do understand that our proficiency is not where we want it to be, however, we are very proud because we're moving or growing all of our scholars to proficiency, and that's evident in our growth for all and our growth for low 25. Now, our science. So our science, you'll actually see, it increased by a little over seven tenths of a point. U.S. history, I would definitely say showed out, reached an all-time high of 48% for proficiency. And then we also have our English learners. We took a slight decline or decrease there. Last, but not least, some other accountability components or indicators of the model. You've heard a lot about our graduation rate that's projected here, but we also want to call out our graduation. If you look in 2018, you'll see that there were a 12-point gap. Each year, we've closed that gap because we've gone from 12 to 9.8%, a little over 8%, and now we are on the heels of the state with just a little over 3% gap. Our acceleration, you actually see there, we grew a little over 7/10% as well as our college and career, which is our ACT, we increased a little over 3%. Now, just a summation real quick, you'll see here that we are a 569. We increased 65 points from 2018, 19 to this year. We're 33 points away from a B. In 2018, 19, you'll actually see that we had a little over 43% of our schools to be C, rated successful, C and above. This year, we're proud to say that we are right at 64% of our schools rated as a C or above. Very exciting. Now, I think Dr. Cormac said in our last principal meeting, there's no turning back now. So with that being said, we want to provide you tonight a few steps for our roadmap to a B. We feel the need to review our district and school's goals based on our 2020 MAP data. Why are we doing that? Simply because many of our schools have already met that goal, so we need to make sure that we increase that level to ensure we maintain the rate of progress. So that means that we're going to continue requiring our teachers, our students, everyone to set school-wide goals. We're going to continue to review our MAP data points to determine strengths and opportunity for growth, but we're going to dig deep. We're going to disaggregate it by the grade level, the subject, the teacher, the student, get all down in the weeds of it, continue to analyze our subgroup data to identify groups of students that need additional support. And when we talk about those students that need additional support, we're not just talking about those students that are... we're not just talking about those students that are in intervention or are low 25. We're talking about those scholars that are, need acceleration or enrichment. Because just in case you didn't know, we had 154 of our scholars to score a perfect score on the state assessment. So it's very important that we maintain that rate of progress. Last but not least...
Excuse me. Repeat that statement. Well, I want to make sure I heard it.
So, of course, we had 154 scholars to score a perfect score on the state assessment. And they came, and they didn't just come from our special program schools. They were spread throughout our district. So we're excited about that. Last but not least, we're going to review and plan professional development around our writing data. We understand that that is an opportunity for growth and those standards that we've identified as well. We're going to promote the district, the use of district and state resources. We have purchased some amazing resources for our teachers to use. So we're really promoting, providing follow-up professional development so they can use them. And the state has also provided what we really enjoy and parents have spoke highly about, which is the online tutoring, which is paper, if you all haven't heard about it as well. Last but not least, any of our schools that are low performing, we're going to conduct a root cause analysis, some intense training to ensure they're not performing next year, not low performing next year. Any questions or comments?
Before, Board Members, before you share any questions or comments, just two additional comments. First off, huge thanks to Ms. Black, Mrs. Blackshear and our data team for their continued work in disaggregating, analyzing, presenting, and keeping data in front of us and empowering all of us, not just the few, the twos and fuses of us, but the entire district team in seeing ourselves, seeing our work, and being more strategic and thoughtful in how we continue in our efforts to improve and to grow our district. So first, want to give you thanks and kudos for your continued work, wonderful work. Two big points, Board Members. In other districts where I've been, and this ties to one of the points that Mrs. Blackshear made, we, there's been, a piece of the conversation has been on the number or percent of scholars who have earned advanced, who have achieved level of advanced on the, and so here it would be the five, I guess, on the state test. And while we called out the scholars who had perfect scores on the assessment, one of the things that I'm looking forward to lifting up are the numbers of scholars who not only passed, who not only made proficient on the test, but who were advanced on the test and demonstrate that level of mastery of their grade level skills and knowledge. And so that's something that I'm looking forward to just kind of highlighting because we have them. We have many of them, and so want to continue to lift that up, especially in those schools where they've got a bit higher proficiency levels. It's now time and part of their work and resetting expectations for them is growing that advanced population. You've now got, you know, for the Obamas and McWillies and several other schools that have much higher proficiency levels than other schools in the district, what's the proficiency, what's the percentage of scholars that advance? Just another way for us to keep pushing and challenging and supporting our schools and lifting higher. And the other thing just to lift up is we know that, like many other districts, many schools in other districts, that growth, and as you saw, our growth of our scholars performing at the, in the lowest 20, lowest quarter, lowest percentile. We know that a lot of our success from this past year was fueled by growth. Scholars that made considerable growth, whether they reached proficiency or advanced or not. And we celebrate those scholars. And we know that you've got to make growth in order to get to proficiency advanced or what have you. In addition to the growth, we're really channeling and narrowing our focus to ensure that scholars actually get above the hump, get over that hump. There, I don't know what the percentage was, but I know in previous conversations, many scholars that are sitting right there at the cusp, right there. They grew, they've improved, but they didn't quite get over that, that line into proficiency. And so that's something that I know through the data team's support. We'll have clearer line of sight to those scholars, clearer line of sight to the specific skills, the specific concepts where we can grow in a school, in a grade level, in a particular subject area, and how we can support folks in getting there. And so just want to kind of lift up some of the conversations that our team has been having all throughout the district and some of the protocols around studying student work, studying lesson plans, just to get smarter and more strategic in how we achieve what years ago might have seemed like a pipe dream, but we're within spitting distance of a letter, of a letter B. And so we want to demystify and debunk the, kind of, how you get there. There's a whole roadmap that we're developing, have developed, actually, in order to get there. So I just wanted to lift those up.
Thank you for further elaborating on that, Dr. Green, in terms of how we're going to do this. Because I'm sure that each of us is thinking how we can move on up a little higher. Yes.
It's a song.
Is that a car?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Are there other comments or questions?
I have one quick question.
Yes.
So you said 33 points away from a B. How many points away from an A?
So I didn't calculate that. I didn't, I did not calculate that.
You need to know that number.
Yes, ma'am.
I will definitely get that.
Did you say 33 or 24?
No, it's 33 away from a B. And what I'll do is I'll get that and report it back. The superintendent just said immediately before it was released, how close are we going to be now? So we made sure to outline that. But I will get that information to you.
Amen. Okay.
Congratulations, everybody. It feels so good to be here. And when we had that press conference, there were multiple times I felt really emotional and overwhelmed about where we were after everything we've gone through as a school district. And boy, it's a testimony to this team and to the leadership and to our principals and teachers and to our young scholars. It is an amazing feeling. Congratulations.
Amen. Thank you.
So Dr. Cormac, the team, I'm sorry, the team has provided us with the number. We are 185 away from an A.
Man.
Which is definitely within reach.
Absolutely, it is.
Chump change.
Of course. We already have over 60, right at 60% of our scholars sitting at 3, 4, and 5.
Chump change.
Teamwork.
Man.
All right.
Okay. Are there other questions?
Yes.
It's just a restatement. You've made a statement, it's a small statement, about the importance of...
You made a small statement about the importance of, you didn't use the word information, but you used another word, data, I think. The importance of looking at the data.
Yes, sir.
And providing it to, could you, would, is, would it be too much of a challenge to just repeat that statement?
So i-if I'm understanding correctly, that was a part of the mission statement in our office. We ensure that we provide accurate and timely data and support the assistant superintendent with working and developing our leaders and our teachers around data so they can get the data and use that data to inform their decisions.
That's it.
Are there other comments or questions? If not, we thank you.
Thank you so much.
Very much.
Very good.
Okay. Now, we will move to information action items. And first on the agenda is approval of PBIS Rewards Program.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Superintendent Dr. Green, Board Vice President, Ms. Hilliard, Board Members. The administration recommends approval of PBIS Rewards, a PBIS management system that will enable all schools to better align on the implementation of best practices and monitoring of data to improve student outcomes. Any questions?
Okay. Are there questions, Board Members, comments? If no questions or comments, um, thank you so very much.
Ms. Hilliard, I move that we approve Information Action Item A, Approval of PBIS Rewards.
Second. It has been properly moved and seconded that we would accept Information Item A. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? The motion passes. Thank you. And now, we move to Dr. Smith.
All right. Great evening, Board President, Board Vice President, Ms. Hilliard, members of the board, Superintendent Green, and our JPS family. The administration is presenting for information action the approval to award RFFP 22, 2022-09, our district benchmark and formative assessment services for K-2 to Instructure as a part of the proposal, I'm sorry. Yeah, the district requests an online platform to be used to administer benchmark and interim assessments to K through second grade. The data gathered from the K-2 assessments will enable schools to track students' performance on priority centers prior to entering third grade. Teachers will have the usage of test banks to create more rigorous, high-quality, standard-aligned assessments to determine mastery of standards. Teachers will also be able to use the data to make necessary adjustments to their instructional practices, such as what type of formative assessments they will use and checks for understanding.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Are there questions?
I do have a, just a quick one. It looks, Dr. Smith, as if maybe we only had two bids for this and one, the one that we're approving tonight was significantly higher than the other one. And I see the reasoning. I'm just wondering if you could speak to that. And it looks like maybe Instructure is a new company we're doing business with? Or we've used Instructure before?
We are currently using Instructure for our third through eighth grade in high school. But with, there is also a predictive study that goes along with Instructure as well that helps us to have a better, closer prediction, prediction of how our students will do on map. And so with the other company, we, in the evaluation process, we noticed that some of the, some of the items that we're using in DMO were not completely aligned to the standards that we saw. And so with that piece of it, and then just ensuring that we have the same type of data sets that we get so that we'll be able to track those standards. So when you're looking at K-1 and 2, there are some standards that we've identified in third grade that students must know and be able to do. And so we'll be able to scaffold down to see exactly how those standards are measuring up as students are progressing to the third grade.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there other questions, comments? Thank you, Dr. Smith. Okay. Is there a motion to accept her report?
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The motion passes. Okay. Approval of agreement between the Mississippi School for Deaf and the Blind and the Mississippi Department of Education and the Jackson Public School District. And that is Dr. Lingam Gibbs.
Good evening, Board Vice President, Board Members, Dr. Green, and the JPS family. The Office of Exceptional Education Services is presenting to the board for approval of an agreement with the Mississippi Schools for the Deaf and the Blind and the Mississippi Department of Education. The purpose of this agreement is to establish a partnership between MSDB and JPSD in providing assessments, additional services, and educational opportunities to the visually impaired, deaf hard of hearing, or deaf-blind students enrolled in either the Mississippi Department, or the Mississippi School for Deaf and Blind or the JPS School District. The mission of this partnership is to provide an academically energizing environment where students can earn additional high school credits, have access to available diploma options. And the Mississippi Department of Education, the MSDB and JPSD can collaborate to provide needed assessments not readily available at either school sites.
Okay. Are there questions? Comments?
I just want to give one additional comment. I want to thank Ms. Marshall Thomas for having a growth mindset with regards to this collaboration because the high school division is offering the additional credits for the Mississippi School of Deaf and Blind, as well as she saw the opportunities for our scholars to receive additional sign language, for example, with additional language credits, things the partnership can bring for both school districts.
That is awesome.
Yeah. Glad to see it come across the table. Well done.
Yes. Other comments, questions? Is there a motion to approve this information?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No nays. There being none, the motion's approved. All right. The next item on the agenda is Dr. Cormac.
Good evening, once again. The administration is recommending the approval of an amended agreement with Reconstruction and the Jackson Public School District. Reconstruction is an after-school program that was previously approved on the October 20th meeting. This amended language would protect the proprietary curriculum materials against reproduction outside of use for the after-school program. And we have aligned on the language in order to do so. So it's a fairly simple amendment, but we recommend your approval.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Cormac. Board Members, are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve Information Action Item D?
As the move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 There being no nays, the motion is passed. All right. Now, we move to approval of agreement between Jackson State University, the Federal Trio Program for After-School, and the Jackson Public School District. And this is, you're doing it for Sumisia?
I am. Yes, ma'am.
All right.
My pleasure standing again for Dr. Sumisia Stokes, who leads our Office of Innovative Strategy. The administration is recommending the approval of an agreement with Jackson State University, the I love, to support the Federal Trio Program. Federal Trio Programs have a long history of supporting upward bound and upward bound math and science programming that supports first-generation college students. We were excited to partner with Dr. Mitchell Shears, who secured this federal grant, and reached out to our Office of Innovative Strategy to collaborate on after-school programming that will support our middle and secondary scholars, many of whom will be first-generation college students. And so the programming sets them on a pathway to prepare for STEM offerings, STEM careers and pathways, and also various kinds of preparation that are very germane in support of first-generation college students. So we urge your support.
Thank you. That's exciting. Yes. Are there questions of Dr. Cormac?
Go Tigers. It's like a great program. I'm glad to see our old friend, Dr. Shears, is still staying connected and keeping us in good partnership with my employer, Jackson State University.
Very much so. Very much so.
Get that plug in. Thank you. All right. Are there other comments, questions? Are there other comments, questions? Is there a motion to approve item E?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, there being no nays, the motion is approved. All right. Uh, consent agenda items finance. Uh, before we, uh, go into this, I want to point out two items in this section that we would like to get additional information on from Dr. Burks. That's item B and D.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Vice President Hilliard, Dr. Green, audience. Uh, item B, uh, would be the approval of the finance, final amended budgets for the fiscal year 21, 22. This is a, uh, the administration is recommending the board approve the final amended budget for the fiscal year 21, 22. This is, uh, a requirement by Mississippi statute that the board, spreading its minutes, the final approval, the final approved budget at the end of the year, um, by October 15th. So we're, this is meeting that requirement. And then item, uh, item B, I mean, item D, I'm sorry, is the approval, it builds on a little bit of what was given in the bond update related to the Newell Field Project. The administration is very committed to this project being completed. Unfortunately, when it was bid, it was bid, um, the bids came back, there were two bids, and the, the lowest bid was $8.3 million, which was significantly more than what was presented to you as a budget recommendation. With that in mind, uh, and with the amount of money that's remaining in the bond, we did not feel comfortable accepting that, uh, bid. So it's being recommended for, uh, to be rebid or for rejection as an item. It will come back to you, as Ms. Robinson said, in parts. We're looking for a strategy to get it done, uh, that will, taking into account the bonded monies that we have, uh, remaining, any bond money that comes back that is unencumbered as we finish up those other projects she listed. All those funds will be combined to complete this project. But we will continue the effort by looking at a strategy of breaking it into parts. Uh, there's a turf part, there is a bleacher part, there is some restroom renovations, uh, and there was a fieldhouse component. We will keep working to get that done, and we'll be back in November with a more comprehensive plan of how we will get that done. But I just want, Dr. Green wanted me to speak to that, and I wanted to give you some additional clarification. We are committed to that project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, you, you may stay. Yes. Consent agenda items finance. And I believe each one of those, we will list, we will listen. We would take, uh-huh. Board members. The consent agenda item finance, all of the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. If there are no further questions, board members, are there further questions? If there are no further questions, a motion to approve consent agenda item finance. Is sent order?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. It has been moved by Board Member Letitia, and second by Board Member Robbie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there? Okay. Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. So now we are down to consent, thank you, Dr. Burks. Uh, we're down to consent agenda item general. All of the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. If there are no further questions, board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I move that we approve consent agenda items general.
Second.
It has been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. No nays. There being none, the motion is approved. And next on the agenda, we have the consent agenda items personnel. All of the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. If there are no further questions, board members, are there further questions? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda personnel?
As so moved.
Second.
Okay. It is been moved by Board Member Thompson, second by Board Member Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. No, are there any nays? No nays. There being none, the motion is approved. Is there a consideration to hold an executive session?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Dr. Green, okay. Uh, there is, um, a motion, various consideration, rather, to hold an executive session. Is there a motion to close this meeting to consider the needs to go into executive session?
As so moved.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Board Member Figures, second by, uh, Thompson. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There being no, none, no nays. Is there a motion? We will close this session out. I'll get it right eventually. Close this session out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for attending.